Number four is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Docket number 14-8061, block 846, lot 26, 860 Broadway in the Ladies Mile Historic District, a late 19th century commercial style store building designed by Detlef Lehnau and built in 1883 to 84 and altered by F. H. Dewey and Company in 1925. This is an application to construct a rooftop addition and replace storefront infill. And this was initially presented on March 18th and is back today with revisions.
Good morning, Jared Nelson, Preservation Staff. So this is an application that was presented back in March. And it's an application for a rooftop addition at 860 Broadway, which is this building here at the corner of Broadway and Union Square at the north, this location. At the time, the commissioners had concerns with the size, design approach, and visibility of the rooftop. It's a two-story rooftop addition. The applicants have some of those concerns and have come back with revision. Sharon Paulson.
We'll reopen the hearing.
I don't usually do the PowerPoint presentations. More interested in the bottom commissioners. Sharon Paulson from PKSB Architects, representing the owners of 860 Broadway, presenting our revisions to our very visible rooftop addition. Not a golden meditation dome, I promise you. I liked it too. When we initially presented this, we started with this postcard image, which was one of the first things we found through the building. And we played Where's Waldo, looking at this postcard and trying to come up with a way of doing a demure rooftop addition that looked contextual to the building, contextual to the district, and did not distract or diminish the importance of the many individual landmarks that line Union Square, which is in itself not a landmark. But we were very intrigued by this postcard image. And so the first part of the presentation, because someone gave it up here in the first presentation, we're going to run through some of the history on the site, which was very interesting to us because it is one of the most well-documented sites I've ever found in the historic district. So this postcard shows a very lovely red brick building with gorgeous cast iron. And that's our new two-story rooftop addition in the postcard, but we knew that this was not a building that is on the site today. The site is located at 17th Street, Broadway, and it goes all the way through to 18th Street. And just want to note that half of the site, the north half, is in the manufacturing district, which does not allow more residential work, any additional square footage, whereas the south part of the site on Union Square North is within a much taller zoning district, which allows for much greater housing and residential. So what we did find was that this site was developed by the parishes multiple times, initially for their home with a small side piece, which is documented in the drawings down below. That building in the upper left became the home of the Union Club. And because the site is documented very well in many photographs, because of all the grades around Union Square, we have been able to see many of the different iterations of the building. As you see in the upper-left photograph, the home is still there with the flag on top now as a club. And there has been an extensive addition with a mansard roof on the top. The building that's there today was designed by Detlef Lehnau. He immigrated in the late 1840s from Europe. He was trained in the atelier of Henri Lebrusse, and he's credited with being the man who brought the mansard roof to America. We thought this was an interesting idea. And he had various designs for the site, and he ultimately had his office in the building once constructed. This is one of his earlier designs. And at Avery, we were able to find all his design drawings. On the upper row of drawings, you can see the sort of life of the building, the original rendering, which was for the red brick building in the postcard with cast iron columns and windows. In the 1920s, which is documented in the 1940 tax photo, the building was stripped. And the red brick was taken off, the cast iron removed, and it became a much calmer, quieter, buffed brick, almost background-type building. But what was retained was the cornice, the upper band, which is a sort of dark red terracotta, and the profile of the interior-type decorative metal at the top. And so with all of this to think of, we had one last historic importance. The building was the last, the third home of the factory and Andy Warhol's office. And so we thought, well, in the spirit of Andy Warhol, and the history of the building, and the long ownership of the parishes, that may be a very visible rooftop addition in a demure but contextual way could be appropriate here. So the design feedback that we got at the hearing was specifically directed to the ground floor of storefront to retain the existing grills, which are not original to the building, but are the historic grills installed in the 1920s. To reduce the rooftop addition, I think the word was proportion, and in keeping with that, look at the scale of it with respect to the building, study the dormer proportions, look at setting it back from the street wall, reducing the stair and the elevator bulkheads, which were visible from some of the primary facades, and use materials consistent with the existing building. We had initially proposed a modern terracotta system. We're now changing that. So at the ground floor, the proposal is to retain the existing grills, glazed storefront, and a smaller decorative bulkhead, which is reminiscent of the original decorative bulkheads of the Lehnau design. And this allows for the introduction of pairs of doors on, in all of the base, around the base of the building, should the owners decide to go with smaller tenets in contrast to the existing petco. And then we went to Paris to take a look at other mansard roofs. And what was really interesting, at least to me, was the variety of types and styles of mansards. That some are stepped, some are a simple wall, which then has a curving addition. But, excuse me, the main sort of characteristic is that the first floor has a clear presence, and then the others recede dramatically. Some are tall, some are low. And this map highlights the historic district boundary. So you can see that this building is essentially the one district building that's really a Union Square presence. There are individual landmarks all the way around. And the Ladies Mile buildings that are highlighted north on Broadway are other buildings with mansard roofs. And we thank Morris-Agemi for contributing his proportional studies, which analyzed heights of bases and mansard additions within the Ladies Mile District, and noted that most of them are one-story to two-story, with the second floor having a truly receiving kind of presence, except for that one further up on Broadway where the roof goes more straight.
So the proportional studies are showing they're the same?
Essentially, the mansard is equal to the base, whatever the base is. And so the next series is to go through our initial proposal on the left and what we're presenting today. So the initial proposal had a much larger, this is a six-story building, proposed seventh and eighth floor, much larger seventh and eighth floors. We have reduced them, we have pushed them back, and we have changed the materials.
But it's still seventh and eighth floor, right?
Yes.
Okay, but you set it back and the height has gone down, is that correct?
Yes. So initially, so what we've done is changed the materials so that in lieu of the terracotta on the upper portion, it's a standing seam metal roof, which is colored to match more closely the coloration of the reddish terracotta. The dormers on the seventh floor are a mix of light precast around the windows and a brick in between where they're set back. We've reduced the bulkheads, this is the Broadway facade, so that they are shaped to follow the stair profile and no longer visible from the primary views. There's been no modification to the 18th Street side, which is the one historic Detlef Lehnau facade that does remain, except that previously we did not show the water tower, which is to remain. And in the floor plans, we originally had the seventh floor right behind the decorative element. We've now set it back. On the eighth floor, we've pushed everything in and set it back, but maintained what we're doing on the north. And in addition, one of the benefits of all of this is all the mechanical equipment, or the majority, is sitting in the roof area behind the addition and well back from the 18th Street side, so it's not visible. And then the very top roof, this was the original bulkhead proposed. It's now just the two stair bulkheads. And the mechanical equipment proposed is sitting behind the stair bulkhead, so it's well back from 17th Street. And that essentially blocked the view by the stair bulkhead. Using the street views, original proposal on the upper level and the new proposal on the lower, and just showing the scale of other buildings in the area. And then these are the secondary or tertiary facade elevations. This is the east elevation, the original proposal, and the new, which shows the pushback there. And the original proposal, which had the full extension of the side wall. And this is a ramp all the way around. This is the one wall that is visible when you're in the district from the north. And this has been sculpted to set back, aligning with that. And the stair bulkhead is now the only piece poking up front. Previously, it was the entire portion. Sections show where it's located. And this section is cutting through the seventh and eighth floors. The red line represents our original and the new design shown beyond. And the other major change to contribute to diminishing the presence of the eighth floor was that previously, all of the dormers were what I'll call outies. They extended for previous. We've modified that so that only the dormers on the seventh floor are outies, and all of the eighth floor windows are recessed into the line public roof structure. And the views around the site. So the new proposals are on the right, showing the change in the materials and the views from afar. And as I said at the previous hearing, when we first looked at the zoning envelope allowable on this site, it was very quick when we realized that any rooftop addition would be visible here. And that it seemed most appropriate to us to make an application for a rooftop addition that was much more contextual. Again, this is the view from the north, looking south on Broadway, initially there, and the new proposal there. And just to note that this side wall, which is not a designed facade, is significantly taller than the adjacent buildings today, and that the additional floors, in my opinion, do not represent a major modification nor compromise visibility from the side of the structure. And these are the views from the west. Previously, much more presence, and now with this pushback and down, you can get much better view of the individual landmark on the corner.
I have a few comments and maybe some questions for you, Sharon Paulson. One is that you talked about, I think it's clear that if you put a rooftop addition, it's going to be visible. And personally, I don't have such concerns about its visibility from Union Square. I think you noted, and I noted myself, that this building is really at the edge of Ladies Mile. And in fact, while you have other buildings that are designated landmarks around Union Square, it is not a part of the historic district. And I think that way, from that perspective, I think the idea of some visibility doesn't really concern me from Union Square. But you did talk about the fact that the enlargement is, I think you used the word muted, and I may be wrong, but I find it hard to see this mansard roof and the two stories as a muted enlargement. I think it's very prominent in terms both its color and its size. And I just see that it just, that isn't dovetail with me in terms of what your intent was. The second concern I have, and I recognize that this is a secondary facade, but the Ladies Mile portion of the district is really, where this site is visible, is really along Broadway. And I think in an earlier package, maybe it didn't show views of what you see along Broadway, but this time, your presentation did. And while it's a rear facade that, I think it's blank, I'm not sure really what's happening there, but, and I think you said you don't believe that the enlargement is going to really detract from that, but I, I think maybe you could speak to that a little bit more, if there's ways to address that. I know that I walked down Broadway recently. It's very prominent, and I think the enlargement probably at the back with the mechanicals must be adding another 30 feet, is that?
No. The total height addition, what is it?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet. I think I'd like to respond to both. I think, first of all, at the prior hearing, the concerns expressed were primarily in relationship to the design of the rooftop addition, and that the presence of a rooftop addition on this building, given the nature of mansard was appropriate to the district, and that the overall scale of it should be reduced, and that there was a history of mansard competitions within the district, which is part of the presentation. We, in the first presentation, did, of course, show the north view. There was no comment regarding the north view. And I think that stems from the presence of this much taller building in relationship to the other buildings. And that the side wall, which is a plain brick facade, and has always been a plain brick facade, in comparison to the more designed facades, whether they were the red brick of the Lehnau design, or the more modest light-colored brick of today's design, that that wall has always been a secondary facade. The moves to reduce the extension's scale by moving it back, angle to the wall, and eliminating the bulkheads, we think has, we had to hopefully reduce the impact of that wall upon the view from the north. And again, as we walk down Broadway, the view of the park will not be diminished by any of this extension.
Are there questions? Yes, Marjorie?
I have a question, well, two. The first one being, so the extension of that side wall, the renderings that we have, it's very hard to see in these little photographs, but how are you going to deal with the seam? You're making it flush, right? How are you going to deal with that seam so it doesn't?
We would like to maintain the seam itself, because it does step on that side. And then try to match the brick as closely as possible in color, use the joints that most relate to the blow. Our intention is to just.
I'm curious.
I'd be happy to look at other.
Right. I just think that, you know, the idea is to maybe not hide the fact that it's a more recent addition, so, and you know, it's a very plain side. I'm wondering if maybe now you have the opportunity to play around with the brickwork or something to embellish it in a certain way. I look at it and I'm saying, it's missing a mural, you know? It like needs something.
We'd be happy to do that, because there were painted signs traditionally on these buildings, and I think a painted sign is something that we've talked about with the owners as a way to lighten up the facade.
Or some other kind of, because some other kind of manipulation of the brickwork.
Of course, being all standard rules.
Right, yeah, exactly. And then the other question I have is, the mansard that you ultimately arrive at, so you know, you went to Paris, did you look up your, I mean, your studies of local mansards? Because of course, we don't actually really have good Parisian mansards in New York. We have New York versions of that.
Yes, we do.
And there are so many, just next door to this building, there is a really good kind of hybrid of mansard. And I'm looking at yours, thinking somehow that the proportions of the dormers, like the mansards that seem to work the best, at least in your photographs, the dormers rise more or have more, have more prominence, or there's more variety, sort of, it breaks the facade more. This one is very regular, kind of misses the life.
Yeah, this has been one of the things that we've gone back and forth on. Initially, when we came back a few weeks ago to meet with staff, we had extended the standing seam color down in between the dormers. That made the roofs somehow look more like it had initially. But we do have an opportunity with the dormers to raise up the ones that extend out at the corner and the two double bays, because they have railings on top, and we could easily make those a bit grander in comparison to what's going on with.
Well, I'm also talking really about the seventh floor level, because the way that a lot of these, yeah, and a lot of these dormers, they start at the seventh floor, they reveal, and they go up higher, and they're kind of grand. Are you using a dormer rule here, or you're just doing seventh floor?
We're just doing a seventh and eighth floor, because the street wall is.
But there's a dorm, doesn't a dormer rule apply here?
There is a dormer rule, but it does not apparently apply, because we're well under the limits.
Under the height.
Oh, okay, so you could play, you could play around.
Yes, we can play around.
I'm recommending a little more playing around.
No, I agree with those comments, and we'd be happy to modify that portion of the design.
But, Marjorie, are you saying that you want some variation in terms of the seventh floor?
Yeah.
Plainer, it's not speaking the same language as all these examples of mansard.
The Barnes &amp; Noble building.
Yes, yeah.
That's sort of my comment as well. I think that the fact of an addition, a mansard addition, is legitimized, I think, by your presentation, by your study of the history of the building, and the history of the site, et cetera, et cetera. It's just a question now of getting the proportions right, and I don't think they're quite there yet. Maybe that's the issue.
That was a question I had. Given the information that you've collected about the proportions, what, why did you choose or what forced you to exceed any of the proportions that are in the neighborhood?
We, I think our overall proportions are correct. I think the relationship of the seventh floor dormers to the overall mansard are where we flattened things out a little too much. And I do agree that Barnes &amp; Noble Building is a much, I think, a very good example for us to relate to, and that making those dormers more prominent on the seventh floor would be in the spirit of the mansards, not just in this district, but historically. And I think the other opportunity for, and I think the elevation is somewhat.
My concern wasn't the dormers, it's the proportion. All of the other ones are. One-story base?
Right, slightly less than the story base.
Now you're showing a two-story. Less than the base, and you're going more than that.
The Morris-Agemi rule here.
No, no, the total, the total height of the two-story mansards equals the base, whatever the base is.
You can work it out from your elevation and scaling.
Well, we'll steal it then. We have a little bit more room to play with.
What is the floor-to-floor heights of the two levels above?
Twelve to six.
Twelve to six?
Yes.
So you still have, you have the ability to actually, you could.
We can play a little more.
Yes, Michael, please.
I was just gonna, are we chatting, or are we asking, or should we just not worry about that?
I guess we.
Because I'm happy to ask, I'm happy to chat.
Well, it's good, because she can actually respond to my concerns.
The question part of my discourse is, tell me, tell me about the brick infill between the dormers and what you think that either added or didn't add. You said that it was a staff suggestion.
No, no, I'm not going to say it was a staff, it was in a discussion with staff.
Tell me what you think it adds or it doesn't add. Do you like it or not like it, think it makes it more or less appropriate?
I think that there are multiple ways to go with the mansard. The dormer at the first rooftop level should be the primary expression. What we saw when we looked at other examples was that the intermediate section was either a typical building material, meaning a brick or a masonry, that related to the body of the building below, or it was a portion of the roof extending down between the dormers. When we looked at the iteration that we discussed with staff, bringing the roof material down between the dormers seemed to make the roof read more prominently, and the dormers to read less importantly. And that could be tied into the issue that Commissioner Polmeyer has raised about the height of the dormers themselves. And we can look at that again. As far as, we painted this one because it did seem to minimize the presence of the roof overall.
By extending the building up visually?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Roberta?
And I think when you look at the view over here, which is the Barnes &amp; Noble Building, each of those primary dormers at the first level above the cornice is then connected with a simple brick wall in between, which is a lower level.
For about half of its height.
For about half of its height. And then the roof element with outing dormers proceeds up. So I think the, if the, if the direction is to really look at the overall proportion once again, and also emphasize the dormers on the seventh floor as the primary elements, then reducing the height of the brick in between would easily.
Roberta?
I have a slightly different take on it, and it's that, well, first of all, I think that it's better.
Thank you.
Although I would say that that setback is not as prominent as, to me, it does not appear as prominent as what you're presenting. It's different, but it's not that big a difference, I don't think, in a big, big degree. But one of the things is, when you look especially at the fourth, the fourth photo, because it's a light color at the seventh floor, and the, and the dormer part, the eighth floor is the dark, that that seventh floor really reads like just another floor instead of part of the dormer. So it's maybe it's a question of materials, but it just looks like the seventh floor with, in the dormer or something, or on the eighth floor. So I think that the colors and materials and how the seventh and the eighth go together need to be understood.
Yes, Marjorie.
So when you look at some of the examples that you provide, I guess, along Broadway, the ones that are corner buildings actually also provide some interesting insight. Where they take advantage of the corner and celebrate it with the dormer.
Yes, and very early schemes, what we.
I've been there.
Let's just say the expression stuck out like a sword from really applied. We had initially looked at the base, because historically, the original designed building had a two-story corner element as part of its storefront design. And we had begun by taking that and applying a similar idea to the roof. And while it looks okay from the south, when you're coming from the west, it just looks like you pasted on a weird little stick on the building. And I think it's because the angle is so wide at this particular intersection.
And then, just to pick up the last thing, is your dormer cuts short, like a whole bay short, you just end abruptly, whereas all of these examples, it nicely frames the building on both sides. Why did you cut yours short?
On your, on the Union Square front.
On the square side, yeah.
It doesn't go to the last bay, I guess, right?
Yeah.
The brick doesn't go.
The brick, the.
The brick banding in between the windows doesn't go, but the mansard goes.
Mansard goes.
No, but the dormer doesn't go all the way across. Ah. So that's like an abrupt difference, like in the other one, it goes end to end.
The dormers are all set well in from the sides of the building. There's like a little decorative, there's.
There, yes, yes, yes.
We, that, that can easily be addressed. What, what we had initially done was to simply take the window bay rhythm and extended it up. And what we've modified it to, which is more in keeping with the other dormer models, is use the same windows, but reduced it to two centered on that bay, which I do think is the more correct way to do it. In this one, they've, they've just done smaller windows within a similar size space.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing and go into discussion. Okay.
We'll be back.
Okay, thank you, Sharida. All right, it seems to me that, at least what I can gather amongst all of us, there's a consensus that the two-story addition can work, is that fair to say? All right. That even though personally, the prominence of the mansard troubles me, maybe because it's not a historical mansard, and the district always has historical mansards. But I can understand that shape and form fitting in with both buildings that we've seen in, in Ladies Mile, as well as on Union Square, so that vocabulary, I think, they can work with. My own instinct is that the height should go down somewhat, if we're, even if we're retaining the two stories, does that seem appropriate? All right, then, yes, yeah, I think, just, I feel, right now, it feels heavy, and I think the idea of having just somewhat more delicate would be better. In terms of the mansard itself and the treatment, I think there've been a lot of suggestions here about how to, how to treat that expression more similar to other mansards, and I think those are great ideas, and she seems very willing to work with that. And in terms of the color, I know, Roberta, you were thinking of something much more stronger at the, or material at the, particularly on the seventh floor. I myself don't have a problem with the color scheme that they've chosen, I think that works nicely, but I don't know what others feel about that. All right, so we can see, maybe you can show us an option of that, and also we can rest on this. Is there anything else? Yes, am I?
I think that, I'm a little bit, I'd like to, I, I don't think that the brick, the brick full-height wall was, is necessarily the helping, helping the appearance. Right. I think that if you look at the dormers, dorm, you know, at, at the mansards, in the, in both examples, it's all about the figure ground. It's all about the roof versus the sculptural dormer. And by having this, you know, color go full height, you know, maybe it can go a portion, you know, to kind of just vertically extend it a little bit, or maybe not. I think, though, that the sense of this as being a dormer as opposed to a full floor is diminished by that, and I would suggest that that be re-explored. The other thing, I think that's, that's, that would, you know, I think Marjorie's idea about extending the dormers up and give them a little more vertical prominence is great. I think the fact that they're set back, the whole thing is set back more has helped it a lot, and the reduction would be good. But the other thing to look at maybe is, it seems to me, in looking at the dormers, that as they go up, the roofiness increases and the openness reduces. And by having the paired windows on the second level, it might make it more about these big holes, and it might be more continuous if they were separated and there were more roof, and it was more regularized, similar to some of the images that have been shown.
All right, that, that sounds like great suggestions. And I know Ms. Paulson will be coming back. Yes.
One more thing, the party wall, the party wall.
The party, okay, the party wall, and I want to just talk about the rear wall as well.
Yeah, the party wall, I thought that the, we've seen some really good party wall.
Mm-hmm, treatments.
Treatments, where the addition is treated with a different material, let's say the standing seam carries around, where lotline windows are used to create a, a design. And all that could be done, I think, with a, a sign plan. I mean, this is perhaps one of the most appropriate locations, both in a district and on a building, for a painted sign.
Right, I just have some concerns about the painted sign, unless it's allowed by the zoning, that they should think about that. It is a manufacturer, it's, it's not, it's, yeah, that's in the C64. All right, so no advertising signs there, and I think it, so, why don't we ask her to play with materials and fenestration to.
Play, play as per.
We should also comment on the storefront, all right? We can say we have storefront. Storefront seems fine.
Seems fine to me, too. Okay, I think, I, I got the sense that everybody generally thought that was okay. That's fine, we'll maybe see you in a month, if that works well.
We'll try to be back as quickly.
Okay, good. All right. Great.
Thank you.